We closed Julia yesterday. They stopped, they stopped filming. You're gonna go for a third season. And I was doing inspections today. I got inspection Monday. I got inspections Tuesday. It's crazy.
What's the name of that one?
The Julia, you know Ju- Julia Child. It uh.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Finished its second season and they told us yesterday they're gonna go for a third season.
Hey Bruce.
Yeah.
You're good, you're good to go.
Okay. Let him in, okay, Casey.
Recording in progress.
Oh, there's Philip on the screen. Okay, uh, time being approximately seven thirty P M, the Franklin zoning board of appeals will come to order. This meeting is being recorded and televised. The listing of matters of those reasonably anticipated by the chair would be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items. Not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is held via the Zoom platform. You can go to the uh G B A website and get the login. You may also join the meeting on your smartphone by calling one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine. For those looking to view the meeting, it can be viewed live at this time on Comcast eleven or Verizon twenty nine. It is also streaming directly from Franklin TV's website. Visit Franklin dot TV and just click on the Town Hall's channel.
Uh, time being. Uh, time being approximately seven thirty P M, seventy eight Colin Ave. Abe Rita Davis, applicant is seeking to construct a twenty four by thirty attached garage that is eleven feet from the right sideline setback. Where twenty feet is required. Applicant is seeking to increase the impervious coverage. In a W R D to twenty seven percent where fifteen percent is allowed. The building permit is denied without a variance from the Z B A.
We're actually in receipt of a uh. Within the form of an application from uh the applicant's attorney. And it's they're requesting a continuance to June nineteen, two thousand twenty three. Um, they had forgotten or not forgotten, but they didn't know that they had to provide recharge for the uh impervious coverage. Uh, they didn't think that the engineer would get it back in time. In fact, did get it back in time, but in the meantime, the lawyer took on another, another uh job that I guess was airing the same night or. Maybe he's gone out to eat, I don't know, but uh the requesting uh. From uh attorney. Ca- uh Cannon, I'm sorry. It was dated twelve twenty seven, two thousand twenty two. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to continue this. Till uh January nineteenth at, what's the last one? Case?
Uh, it would be seven fifty P M.
Okay, let's just make it eight P M because I know we'll be running a little bit late that night, so.
Okay.
Um, I'll entertain that motion.
No move.
Second it.
Motion made and seconded to continue this hearing until uh January nineteenth at eight P M. Uh, any discussion? Hearing done, uh roll call vote. Archie?
Uh, yes.
Philip?
Yes.
Uh Chair votes yes.
Time being uh.
Okay, be be, yeah, I don't know if it's seven thirty yet, is it? Yeah, okay, seven thirty five. We've already, yeah, go ahead. We just got started a little bit late. Try that though, I'm sorry.
No problem. Time being approximately seven thirty five, seventy one A North Park Street, Jerry Lawler. Applicant is seeking to construct a single family home which is five feet from the right sideline. Setback where twenty is required. The building permit is denied without a special variant from the Z B A.
Uh applicant present?
Applicant and attorney are present.
You wanna just identify yourself for the record, please?
Yes, I am David Vulcan, counsel for Gerald Lawler and um. Uh, Mr. Lawler was on. Not sure if he got disconnected and that's him reconnecting.
Yeah, anyway, okay. There any abutters for uh seventy one A North Park Street? Um, okay.
Counsel for Mr. Glenn Cross and Mr. Glenn Cross are here as a butters.
They didn't identify themselves.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I my computer didn't kick on. I'm here for the next hearing, but we are a butters.
Okay.
My name's John Powers. I'm the attorney for Robert Glenn Cross.
Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Walker, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Um, so um, we, after discuss, after the hearing last month, that was continued. Um, there was a few things that um I wanted to address that the board had uh questions about. Uh, as well as a proposed amendment to the requested variance. To allow more distance between the two properties. Um, the first wolf thing I wanted to address quickly was the chair had raised the issue about a. Um subdivision. Of property that occurred, uh that was approved by the Z B A, denied by the planning board. Um, back in the uh late sixties, early seventies. And what that appears to be is the current Lawler parcel in its entirety was attempted to be subdivided. Um, but as it never was, that property is still unsub- unsubdivided today, so the. Uh eleven thousand one thirty nine square feet of land is still the, the parcel that uh Mr. Lawler. Currently owns in its entirety. Um, and so the, the issue of when this sub, this. Uh, particular parcel was broken up in around nineteen seventeen, I believe.
Yeah, listen, I can, I could save you some time. I think we went over this before and I've done some research and uh, you know, somebody that I trust. Uh, told me that they looked it up in the uh registry of deeds and I guess it is however it got to be a lot. At least, you know, one A, uh seventy one A and seventy one B. So let's just take that on face value instead of delving back into that, you know, I understand.
Thank you, sir.
It's an odd uh, it, it, it's an odd situation here. Go ahead.
It, it is, sir, so um, and I know you're already aware of the history from the last time we, we met. Um, one of the other issues that we was raised was the uh elevation changes on the, the land. And if I may share a screen, um, I actually have the town's G I S map that can help illuminate. The uh issues and what we're gonna be proposing in the amendment. Uh, to basically be pushing the, the land over, uh pushing the proposal, proposed. Well, uh, building over some and changing the dimensions.
Um. Yeah, go ahead. Show us what you got.
I, for some reason, that folder disappeared. Okay, reopen it again. Uh, I'm gonna. Try to. Yeah, I'm gonna open, I'm gonna open it up first and then um. Then share the screen, see if that solves that problem. I am not sure why this. Is not.
Can't double click on that. It won't take over your screen.
Oh, there we go. It was, it was hidden behind the images. There we go. Um. So as we can. See here, this is the, this is the town's G I S map, which has the original structure before the fire.
Hasn't come up yet, hasn't come up on the screen.
It's not.
Came up for a split second.
David, if you're using two screens, that we might be looking at one screen and you're looking at the other screen.
No, I just have the one screen on here again. I changed over computers and so I'm doing this on my laptop because my other one doesn't have. Doesn't have um audio.
Oh, all we can see is your files.
Ah, okay. Um. How's that?
There you go.
Okay, um.
There's a map, there's a map that really doesn't tell us much, but go ahead.
This is the G I S map showing the old property. Uh, these are ten foot intervals, uh, two foot. The clock, there's a two foot change in elevation for each ten feet. Um, that's here. So this is where the property was here. His backyard up here and basically it's a eight foot. Uh, change in elevation to the pool area in the back over there and it's. Uh, and this is a drops down to a approximately two to four foot. Elevation change uh on this uh side closer to Park Street. Um, so the, to illustrate this further and hopefully um. So this is the proposed amendment. That we would like to have under consideration where instead of there being a um five foot. Are you, are you seeing the? The plot plan?
We're seeing the architect's rendering. We're seeing an architect's rendering of a proposed house.
Uh, showing the interior, it's an interior sketch.
Done showing the outside of the elevation.
I'm trying to scroll down, it's the. If I just hide something else, there we go. So this would be twelve feet to fourteen feet from the property border. Where this curved um proposed curved wall is. Is the top point of the elevation where there's an existing stone staircase and walkway that's already, this is already in existence. This is what's. There on the property. Um, and so the proposal would be to move everything over so that there's a minimum of twelve feet. Which would allow um. It would, I mean, from the five feet to the twelve feet, you know, obviously in, in terms of financial. Uh, because there, the foundation was there and it goes uphill. Um, there's gonna be fill that's required. The difference between five feet to twelve feet is um one additional truck. Um, so it'd be one truck worth of fill for five feet at the twelve feet mark. It's, it's two trucks. Of fill for twenty feet, it would be four trucks of fill. Um, to level and grade out um that land. Um, where the foundation was. Uh, because of the high elevation. Um, coming down and so the, the current plan would be to, you know, again, build up against. This stoneworks here. Um, you know, at this point, there's not much. In terms of going this um, you know, with the width of the property facing which Houston Street. There's not much further over. He can go without tearing out the existing stone staircase landscaped area. Um, the, a lot of the shrubs that are there now, of course, would still have to be removed. Um, but it would still allow him to keep some of the existing landscaping as opposed to re-landscaping. Um, that entire um area. And then. The, oh, the, 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 the distance between the street and the front of the property would remain. Uh, the same as original, um, but you know, again, originally where the two houses were, were the one house or one building was joined. Together, there would now be a twelve foot separation um on this side here. Um, which, and there would be no, originally there was a, in the original plans, there was a bump. Out here of seven feet and that would have been an additional room. Um, but by, you know, utilizing. This under area here because of the elevation. Um, there's some financial flexibility in doing a walkout basement that covers the. Uh, just differences between the different grades on the part of the property. Um. I also, to illustrate this. Um. Let me see if I can. Come on. Screen share. So this is the actual visual view with um. Uh, as you can see, the, the area here and one of the reasons for the extra fill, of course, is because the. Foundation was there, was dug down and then it goes up. Here, which is about six to eight feet higher than the pool area, which is off to the left behind these. Behind the fence here, which is off to the side of the shrubs. So the proposal would be the, actually bringing the house pretty much over all the way to here. This is about where the border is and it would actually come over twelve feet. So it would actually provide twelve feet here and as you're going here with Mr. Glenn Cross's uh presentation. Their house, they're proposing would be in the rear, so there would actually not be um another house adjacent. On the land or, you know, a minimum. You know, they would have, you know, driveway that would just be adjacent to this. Uh, but there would be plenty of room uh for access to the side of the building and, you know, again, it's just a matter of. It's reducing the overall footprint um that we proposed from the previous to uh. Give you um. A. View from the top of that area, sir, um. This is, this is the view from the top. Of that area where you can see the stone staircase as it comes up. Obviously, there's. There's debris near there now because of the, you know, obviously it's been uninhabited due to the fire and, and the tear down. Um, but this is the staircase and walkway and what he would be doing is building the prop, building the structure into. This to essentially use the structure as a retaining wall. Um, to avoid either needing to do the fill or adding a retaining wall, which would be more expensive. Uh, and create a more of a financial hardship, you know, again, the idea is to preserve as much as the landscaping to avoid the. Uh, additional costs that would be more prohibitive. Between moving. A lot of the existing landscaping, including fencing and the pool. Um, as you can see right here from the edge of this photograph here, this is where the drop. You know, the, the staircase, as it comes down here, there's another drop here because you can see from the fence. You're only seeing the top half of the fence. Um, you know, I'm using the G I S survey, but I do believe that um, that's a little bit of a further drop into the fence, the. One of the other things, let me go back to um. Let me go back to the. Um, make sure I'm. Getting it right.
All right, um, Mr. Vulcan, it, Mr. Walker, instead of going through the whole thing, let us, let's just stop here and ask a couple of questions. You trying to tell me that you're gonna use the old foundation and you're not gonna have to destroy that wall and those steps and everything else to put a new foundation in?
No, sir. No, sir. What I'm trying to say is that the new foundation for the new ha, for the new structure. Would be the new retaining wall for that area. That area where that current retaining wall is right now will have to be torn down. To move the house. If we were doing five feet, that retaining wall would stay there, but at the twelve feet. We're proposing removing and cutting out that retaining wall. Using the new building structure as the retaining area, as the retaining wall for that um back elevation.
Some sort of stairway that you got that says goes around the side of the house? Or what's proposed to go around the side of the house?
No, sir, that, that, that's, that stairway is the one that I showed in the photograph, the existing stone staircase.
Yeah.
So.
How far is that away from the current foundation?
Um, that.
Or the one you're proposing?
Oh, for the one I'm proposing, sir, that staircase would come up behind it. It would be about. By four to five feet. Away from it.
Yeah, I don't know. Hard for me to picture. Anyone else on the board have any questions up till this point? Chris. Go ahead.
I was, I was saying I'm all set, Mr. Chairman, for now.
Okay, thanks. Megan, any question?
Uh, uh, no questions from me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Phil, you got a question?
Archie, look Archie, I just croned out his mic.
Uh. Yes, you made mention that you've been here before, but this is the first time I'm seeing this, so.
Um, uh, oh, they were here a couple, they were here a couple of weeks ago.
Okay, alright.
The last meeting.
I don't have any uh questions, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Phil.
Any questions on that? Walkway and the stones, it looks like it's, there's nothing there. It looks like a couple of piles of stone. This walkway on that side view.
Uh, it's a tough view to see, but there's about, I believe, nine or ten steps coming up and around. It's just hidden from, it's hidden by shrubbery. There's a lot of debris. Um, when I say debris, it's like leaves, dirt. Um, because they were removing the foundation and so a lot of the dirt and dust got disturbed. Some of it went over. Um, you know, no one's been living on those properties for over a year. Because of the, the fire, since the fire.
I just can't see the steps, that's all. So I came, I brought it up. You showed the picture and it doesn't look like steps to me, that's all.
Uh.
You showed the picture. I didn't show the picture.
Yeah, I, you know, I, again, it's really hard to kind of get a good photograph from there. Um, I have some other photographs.
That's why they got cameras.
This was a camera. It's just that it, because of the dirt debris and the, the angle of the pitch, because it's a very steep rise up that slope. Um, you know, as you come into it and it's a tight staircase turn. So it's.
Listen, we're talking about building a house. We're not talking about saving a, we're talking about building a house.
We're building the house, but it's trying to.
If you have to, if you have to build another stairway to it, you have to build another stairway to have it, then that's gonna have to be the case. You know, I mean, because I'm not happy with houses set at five feet off the line and, and seven feet. And you got seven feet from the point of that extra couple of feet that he picked up in court.
Oh, no, no, sir, no, sir. Uh, uh, we, we're, we're proposing an amendment so that we're twelve feet and fourteen feet.
Okay, I don't think I've seen that one yet.
Mr. Chairman, can I chime in at that point?
Sure.
So in uh, Mr. Vulcan, at that point, the hardscape is effectively all then underneath the house that would be built, given the sketch that's here.
No, the, the hardscape is going from the, what would be the lower portion of the lot. To the upper rear portion of the lot behind the house. So it'd go for, it would go from the side of the house to the back of the house.
See, can I turn my screen? Thank you.
Did I shot, stop my sha- sharing, screen sharing?
Uh, you did, yep. Am I showing G I S or am I showing the uh Adobe?
Okay. Yeah.
The Adobe, the.
This is the, this is the original one. You're showing.
In this, in this plan.
That's not, that's not the original house.
No, this is, this is the one we got tonight, so.
That's.
This is the one that chose five feet instead of, you said eleven.
And which corresponds to this plan from the last meeting, but this is, we received this today, right, you know, as part of this package, right?
Wow, wait a minute. We did receive something today, Chris, but uh, to be honest with you, it was just a, it was a sketch. It wasn't an engineer drawing.
This was the other one.
No, sir. The, our surveyor is on vacation and we wanted, we were gonna have this done. Uh, on the actual property plan um. From the surveyor, but, you know, we would. You know, anything obviously decided today would be pending the, the formal uh and final submission from the surveyor actually showing the. Not five feet, but twelve and fourteen feet. So that, that, that whole side, that's, that's, the whole back end is gonna be straight, so that. That area where you're seeing a bump out would be removed from the, from the requested modification.
Understood. So these numbers would be twelve because this would go away.
Exactly.
Understood. Okay, that clarifies that point for me. Thank you.
So you're saying where the, where the original plan that you submitted us, the one that we can see really well here, it was done by the engineer. Where it says seven point one and five point zero, you're, you're proposing to change those to what?
That would be twelve and ten. I'm sorry, tw- uh, twelve and, twelve and fourteen, sorry. Twelve and fourteen, twelve and fourteen.
Okay. Okay, um, you can't get to fifteen?
Um, unfortunately, sir, with, with pushing to fifteen. Uh, it would be the, this, it's the issue with the staircase and the dis, the way that the slope comes down on that back portion. It would require, I mean, yes, it could feasibly be done, but it'd be about a ten to fifteen thousand dollar landscaping change to. You'd have to take the steps out, re, re-pitch them, re-grade them and reset them going to a different side. Um, but that's, you know, i- if that's what the, the, the Z B A. Uh, you know, wishes, but that is the difference between a few feet, the three feet makes that. We tried to put it as tight as possible up to that staircase, literally all the. Grounds, all the um ground landscaping that's in front of the staircase currently would be all removed and dug out to. Make room for pushing the house further over.
And uh, while I got you and you're thinking about it, how far back from the street, from North Park Street, do you propose to set the house?
Um, it would be at its existing.
Well, there is no existing.
Uh, well, I mean, of the, it would be of the same, the same as it was, um.
How do we know what that is?
It's in my application, sir, it's um. I believe it's. I'm trying to put my application, but I'm having some issues with the getting to my.
Something in the application says fourteen point three six feet.
That sounds about right, which is also consistent with all the other homes on the street. They're all about the same distance off the front.
Whatever, you know, you need a thirty foot setback there, don't you?
You know, I know that the.
Yeah, very quiet, probably. Well, maybe it's, you know, it's a front yard, just thirty foot setback.
Mr. Chairman, Gus Brown.
Yeah, go ahead.
Raising, raising his hand. Um, the existing home that was there um before the fire was fourteen point three nine feet. We did not send them for relief for that.
Okay, so they're just here for the sideline setback?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Okay, all right. Mr. Walker, there's nothing we can do for you tonight. Um, if you're gonna propose something, you need the engineer to show it on the plan. I suggest that when you come back, it's a minimum of fifteen feet off the lot line. And the only reason why I would propose that was because the, the neighbor has moved, you know, you'll, if you wanna hang around, you'll see the next hearing coming up. He's proposing that his be fifteen feet off the line also. So if he's gonna be fifteen feet, you should be fifteen feet.
Yes, sir, and we, we'd also probably wanna give you some perk tests that we weren't able to get done in the past month.
Um, well, you got sewer there. You have sewer there, don't you?
Um, there, it's, the, the issue is for the drainage on the. Uh, far side of the property, the, with Houston Street side of the property. That's situating, situating the property closer to what Houston Street. Does bring up some drainage problems as the further over we go and we wanna just be able.
You're proposing to, you're, you're proposing twelve feet. I'm asking you to move it.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. I'm just saying in case that fifteen is unfeasible and we would have to. Switch the orientation. Um, we would need to figure out whether that's feasible.
I, you know, you proposed, you came in at seven and five. Now you're proposing twelve. I suggest that you make it work at fifteen. That's just a friendly suggestion.
We will certainly take that under advisement as uh, as intended, sir.
Okay. Um. Anyway, I mean, obviously, we're gonna continue this until. I don't know how much of a hurry you're in for this, but you know, we're kind of booked up on the next hearing on the nineteenth. Uh, we'll probably put it off till February second.
First February should be fine.
First meeting in February?
Yes, sir.
Whatever. I think it's, I think I heard. Whatever. I think it's, I think I heard somebody say it was the second. Yes, it is the second. Anyway, um, yeah, Casey told me that earlier before we started the thing. If the building commission is happy with the 14.8 feet off or whatever it is off the front, set, the front yard setback, I can live with that, but if you move in the house off the line, because now you consider that you, you got two separate lots here, one on the right, one on the left. If the guy on the left is coming in with something that's asking for 15 feet off of that line, then I suggest that you make yours 15 feet off of that line also. That's all I'm telling you. So, anyway, what do you wanna do? We can, we can do that. We can, we can have a vote tonight if you want us to vote tonight, or we can, or you, we can continue it. And then you'll get a chance. I know the engineer is gonna be back in town on the 9th. I'm sure that he can get working on this before February 2nd, if that's, you know, if you, if that's what you choose.
I, I, I would like to continue to February 2nd so that we would, because we would, we would need, I feel that we would want to have the surveyed plan submitted to the board for a final, with anything that gets voted on that has the final surveyor position on it anyways.
Right. We wouldn't vote on it unless it came through. All we do is continue it until you can provide us with that copy, so. Obviously, tonight, we wouldn't approve anything anyway. The only thing we could vote tonight would be to turn you down. And I don't think you want that. I don't want that either. I mean, I like everybody to be successful that comes before us, as long as they compromise a little bit. Uh, at least I see now there's a little spirit of compromise. We're not like the House of Representatives today anyway, so maybe we can move on from this point, but 15 feet is the number I'm looking for. I don't know. I can poll the other members if you want, but, uh, you know, 15 feet. I, that's what the next hearing is gonna be. Um, I don't think that there's any, you got a much bigger, much wider lot that, uh, you know, that you can, you can make, that you can use that, you can make that 15 feet without any problems at all, especially if you're volunteering 12-point something.
Yes, sir. We will try to make it work if we can and submit it, uh, new, new documents by the next hearing.
Okay, you know, something, I don't know, this original thing, I, I think I saw her on Drawn, this original plan is, is changed now that the composition of the house or the, the measurements of the house, so I would, I hope that they're reflected on the new plan also.
That's what we intend.
Okay, very good. Okay, um, Chris, any questions?
No, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Are any, are any comments or whatever before, you know?
No, I'd like to see the revised plan.
Okay, Megan.
Um, yeah, and I agree. I think 15 feet and then seeing the, uh, up-to-date, uh, professional rendering would be good.
Okay, Archie.
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Phillip.
Definitely 15 feet. Now, 15 feet from where?
From the right-hand lot, not the bump out, the straight, the longest of the straight lines there. That's what I'm talking about.
Yes.
I don't even know how big that bump out is. I think that bump out's two by, something like that. Two by 15, so we're not talking about the bump out. We're talking about the straight line. Let's, let's assume that the bump out's not even there. So from the straight line, 15 feet.
Yes.
So from the bump out, it would be 17 feet if it's two feet wide. We all set with that? One might freeze up over here. You all set, Phillip?
Yeah, I'm fine. Yeah, that's exactly right.
Okay, all right, okay. All right, all set, Mr. Volker?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. There was no Butters other than the people that are on next, and I'm sure that they'll chime in when the time comes, but. Uh, Mr. Powers, acting as a representative for the Butters, do you have anything you wanna add?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to continue until February 2nd. Casey, what time?
7:35 P M.
The, it's February 2nd at 7:35 P M.
Second it.
Motion made and second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Uh, all those in favor, roll call vote. Chair vote yes. Phillip?
Yes.
Archie?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Volker. We'll see you on February 2nd.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Okay, Phillip.
Definitely. Time being approximately 7:40 P M, 71B North Park Street. Uh, Robert Glenn Cross, applicant is seeking to construct a single-family home, which is 14 feet from the right sideline, setback with 20 is required. Uh, 15 feet from the left sideline setback and 14 feet from the rear setback with 20 is required. The building committee denied one of the variance from the Z B A.
Okay, you might have not have seen it, Phillip, but we have another plan that was submitted today with a 20-foot setback on the rear, so that one's, that one's gone, but that's okay.
I'm.
Chairman. Yeah, well, it came in this afternoon. Go ahead, Mr. Powers. Identify yourself again, please, for the record.
It's actually, and Mr. Chairman is Peter Padula. I'm also here as counsel on behalf of Mr. Glenn Cross.
Okay, thank you.
You're both here. Attorney Powers is gonna do the presentation, but I'm here as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good, uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening.
Hang on one second, Mr. Powers. Could you hang on? Just hang on one second. I forgot to ask, is there any Butters here for 71B North Park Street? Just on the outset that there may be. Okay, Mr. Powers, go ahead.
I'm in a butter. I'm sorry. Uh, this is Jerry Lawler.
Okay, Jerry, thank you for identifying yourself.
Well, good evening. Um, I, in my, um, filing, I went through some of the history. Essentially, this was a very weird situation. It's the simplest way to put it. It was an existing home back in 1917 that literally was partitioned down the middle and, uh, each side was given to a, a different family member and it proceeded within the family and generations of the family. Uh, my client, uh, Robert Glenn Cross, in 2016 was the first person outside of the family to buy, um, or to get involved in, in a portion of the building. So he bought uh, 71B, which is uniquely essentially half of a house. The house burnt down and now we're looking to rebuild it. And when we looked at it, trying to rebuild it in the same spot presented a lot of problems. You had issues of being so close to the lot line, you had some building code issues. So I suggested, would it be possible if we took the existing footprint of the house and we put it in the rear of the lot where there was plenty of room, behind the garage? Uh, in that way, we'd have a, a lot that was, uh, more pleasing and conforming to the district. And it allowed us possibly to save the garage, but certainly not to have the issues that you'd have presented if you had a building you were trying to reconstruct right at a property line. Um, and so if it's okay, let me, um, just see if I can share my screen. Unless everybody has my plan, uh, but what I see is.
I think Casey got it to everybody. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to look at it yet.
Okay, so if you're looking at it, I won't bother sharing, but what you'll see is we took that same footprint, we put it in the back, we moved it forward, so we don't need rear relief. We're 10 feet away from that existing garage, so all we would be asking for is the two side setbacks, uh, 15 and 14. And that would allow us to then build a structure on the same footprint, but avoiding those problems of trying to construct something right in a lot line.
Okay, thank you for that. Is that it?
That's it. I'd, I'd be glad to entertain any questions, uh, if I could help with anything, but that's essentially it. We're just trying to reconstruct and building exactly in the same location presented a lot of problems. I, I talked to the building commissioner, there's some building code issues. Um, just not something that's desirable to have something right on the property line like that. But taking the same footprint, putting it in the back, uh, it seems to be a, a much better situation. My client's trying to rebuild after the destruction was owned by a fire and, uh, we're trying to make the best of the situation.
No, I, I can understand that fully. I mean, I think you've done yeoman's work at trying to put something back on the lot that would fit in a respectful and conscientious manner to, to take as much relief from the, uh, from the sidelines as you could get based upon what the footprint of your original building was. So, anyway, um, okay, uh, I'll open it up to the board. Uh, Chris, you have any questions or comments?
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Powers, is this also gonna be a, a two-story structure similar to the original half of the whole?
Yes, that's our plan to be a two-story structure similar to the original. I think the original was three, but that'd be, I think, peculiar, so our plan would be just a traditional two-story structure.
And the, and moving it out 20 feet, uh, would satisfy that rear yard. Um, is that also considering potential, uh, the gable end measurement? So there were not, there wouldn't be additional relief that would be needed beyond the 20 feet?
Uh, no, I don't think we've, uh, let me just look. We are just pulling it forward and I don't believe there's any, I think that's the way the engineer measured it, the exact footprint. We follow that exact footprint.
Yeah, but I think what Chris is talking about is maybe the overhangs or something, the, uh, soffits or whatever, you know, I think, uh, and I don't know, maybe the building commissioner can answer that question, but it was always my interpretation that it was a imaginary line that went from the ground up, from the setback up, and nothing on the building could, uh, you know, encroach on that. So if you had a flying rake or whatever on the, if you built a gable end house, um, that, you know, you might, I think that would have to be over. Gus is on the call. Gus, can you answer that for me, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Gus Brown, building commissioner. It is two feet on soffits and overhangs that are exempt from setbacks up to.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right.
Great. Uh, no further questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, Megan.
Uh, no, no, no questions from me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Archie, any questions, comments?
No, no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Phillip.
Yep, all set.
Yeah, I, I think I'm all set too. I understand what's going on here. I understand the, the desire for the two parties to uh, break apart and have their own separate residence apart from each other. Uh, so I, I don't really have any problem with it either. And to be honest with you, if, if they'd have came tonight with the 14-foot setback in the rear, I would have asked them to, uh, come back with another plan that showed that, uh, you know, that they could meet that 20-foot setback from the rear lot line. Um, with that being said, before I close, uh, Mr. Lawler, did you have any questions or comments, if you're still on the call?
Uh, no, I don't.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Omo, second.
Motion made and second to the close of public hearing. Any discussion? Uh, hearing none, roll call vote. Archie?
Yes.
Phillip?
Yes.
Chair vote yes. Thank you, Mr. Powers. Thank you, Attorney Padula.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I will move over to, uh, general business. I think we have one thing with my agenda going. We have to approve the minutes.
Can I ask one quick question?
Sure.
Close the public hearing, but did we vote on a motion for the variance?
No, you're right. We didn't. We closed the public hearing.
That was really quick. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, 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 okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
What are we doing?
Uh, 81B, uh, North Park Street. We, we just closed the public hearing on that last vote. We didn't vote the setbacks.
So, so I don't think I can vote on this. I wasn't at the first meeting. I think it's, uh.
No, no, this is the, this is the first meeting for this one. The other one wasn't here before. They, they were late getting their application, and so this is the first meeting. You're all set, Archie.
I don't, I, I, I don't have a motion.
I don't have, I don't have the thing in front of me for some reason.
Yeah, I know. I'll entertain, I, I'll entertain this motion from somebody that we grant the variance for 71B North Park Street for the, uh, proposed, uh, single-family dwelling, two-story dwelling to be built. Uh, where, uh, an existing building burned down in a fire a year and a half ago. Uh, with the, uh, easterly side or the right-hand side of the plan uh, showing a 14-foot setback where 20 feet is required and that the left side or the west side of the building, uh, be granted five feet in relief, uh, down to 15 feet where 20 feet is required. Uh, for the purposes to build the thing, it's shown on a plan, uh, to replace the house that burnt in the fire. It's shown on a plan entitled Land Planning Inc., uh, plot plan located at parcel ID 297130-000-000. 71B North Park Street, Franklin, Mass., prepared for Robert Glenn Cross.
Omo.
Think that, I think that covers it. Motion made.
Second it.
Motion made and second. Any discussion? Although, no, hearing no discussion, all those in favor, uh, will have a roll call vote. Uh, Archie?
Yes.
Phillip?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Thank you. Thank you again, both attorneys. All right, general business. Approval of the December 15th, 2022 meeting minutes. Uh, members have been provided a copy, either electronically or in the packet. Um, I'll entertain a motion.
Cool. Everybody get a chance to read them? Uh, I'd like to make a motion.
Well, if you, if you weren't here, if you weren't here, you're gonna abstain. You don't have to vote.
I would see it for the December 15th minute.
Oh, you were?
Yeah.
Okay. When did we have another one? Okay.
I, I thought it, uh, maybe I wasn't here.
When did you go to Florida?
I would see it for that.
Okay, all right, then that, we're all set then. Okay, motion made and seconded to accept the minutes of, uh, December 15th. Phillip, did you second him or did you?
I seconded, yeah.
Okay. Okay, uh, any discussion, changes, omissions, deletions? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Chair vote yes. Phillip?
Yes.
Archie?
Yes.
Okay, just wanna wish everyone a happy new year. Casey, anything to come before the board?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, February 2nd, right? I got that date right.
February 2nd and then before that, January 19th.
That's right, true, January 19th, that's the big one, yeah. Okay, maybe I was trying to, maybe I was trying to forget that one.
I won't let you.
All right. Okay, everyone, uh, thank you very much. A motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second it.
Motion made and seconded for adjournment, non-debatable. All those in favor signify by saying aye by roll call vote. Archie?
Aye.
Phillip?
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Good night, everyone. Sorry, who's that? Who's that?
Gordon, Gordon Jenkins is on the call. He has his hand up. I know he was on Conlon Ave. I'm not sure if he was here for that hearing earlier, for the Conlon Ave hearing.
Oh, the first one? Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, we did call it off, but we continued it. Uh, do you have a question?
You're muted, Mr. Jenkins.
I don't see him on my screen, that's why.
Gotta turn your microphone off. There you go.
There you go.
All right, uh, no, I, I, I tuned in at seven o'clock. I'm not used to Zoom, but I got on at seven o'clock, but there was nothing on until almost quarter of. Was something discussed about Conlon Ave?
Uh, yeah, it wasn't quarter of. It was, uh, about 7:35 by the time we got the meeting open because the TV had a little problem getting it up and running.
Oh, okay.
But, uh, they, they had, uh, because of what they're doing, um, we usually make them show a remediation about, especially for the coverage issue. You know, he's gonna, he's gonna have some impervious coverage, which is more than what's allowed in the zone. So, uh, I don't think they were aware of that. When they were made aware of it, they were more than happy to have an engineer figure it out for them and give us, uh, you know, they'll probably put some Caltex in or something to, to put the, any water that comes off the roof and put it into the ground. Unfortunately, they didn't think that the engineer would have the plan done in time, so, uh, they were, they sent in a request for continuation. Uh, the plan was done in time. Uh, the, the engineer got it, well, somebody got it to us anyway. And, but unfortunately, the person's attorney representing him already went on to something different. You know, he scheduled something else in its place, so we, uh, just gave him the benefit of the doubt. We continued until, uh, January 19th. Now, that one's gonna be at eight o'clock on January, on January. You won't get another notice. This is your notice now.
January 19th at eight o'clock?
Yeah, at eight o'clock. What, it could be a little bit after. I mean, we, we schedule everything five minutes at a time. And as you see, things run a little bit long. I'm sorry that you get on till 7:45, but we did, we did discuss it, that there was an application for a continuance and we granted it, so.
Okay, so no, so no sense for me putting in my two cents right now.
Well, no, I mean, you know, it wouldn't be fair because the applicant's not here. That's how usually how we handle it, but. I'm sorry if there was any confusion. Uh, the the broadcast, I mean, if you were on the computer, you should have been able to log into the Zoom meeting. I don't know if you can actually see anything. You have to wait for the secretary to let you in at seven thirty.
I was waiting, I was waiting for the host to to allow me in.
Okay, well, that that might have been an issue on our part. Now you can turn in at seven, and by eight o'clock, I'm sure you'll be.
Excellent.
Thank you very, thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Everybody have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Thank you.